I told them, yeah. Well, some of them weren't here. Goodbye. You have all the runners up standing on one side and all the winners standing on one.
Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to welcome you to the Metropolitan School District or Martinsville School Board meeting. On behalf of the school board, we thank you for being here in person or virtually. I'm Matt Hankins, president of the school board. To my left is Heather Staggs, vice president. To her left is Luke Jackson, secretary. Dan Conway, next, board member, and Jackie Deckard, board member. To my right is superintendent Eric Boland and assistant to the superintendent, this is Suzie Lips. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and then stay standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to give the student recognition to Mrs. Lips.
Thank you. All of our spelling bee winners and runners-up. And if you could come forward and stand up front, Mrs. Van Devender, I'll get you in place. And all the principals, if you want to come over and stand by the microphone. Or representatives, principals or representatives.
Right up front. You can stand behind or beside.
Thank you, everyone. Please welcome tonight Martinsville schools best spellers from all the elementary schools, Bell Intermediate Academy and John R. Wooden Middle School and their principals or representatives. This past month Martinsville schools facilitated spelling competitions and selected winners. Those top students, their teachers and parents were invited to be recognized tonight. Our district celebrates the students standing in front of you because of their success with spelling. However, more importantly, our school community knows that students who prioritize spelling as a skill and will grow into outstanding spellers also develop self-confidence, communication and public speaking skills and the ability to thrive under pressure. Good spellers are known to be self-motivated and probably a little competitive. Human brains are not specifically designed to do spelling or reading like they are walking or speaking. These skills have to be learned. They are not built in. Students who are strong spellers go on to become good communicators in their families and with their jobs because spelling is a critical component of communication. Congratulations, spellers. At this time, the principals or representatives will introduce the winners and runners-up. And our superintendent, Mr. Boland, and our president of the school board, Mr. Hankins, will give out medals.
Okay, for Brooklyn STEM Academy, our facilitator was Miss Karen Strife. Thank you, Miss Strife, for helping out again this year. Our spelling bee winner is sick tonight, but it is Brynnek Bell. He's not here. And our runner-up is Liam O'Millane. Congrats, Liam.
Congratulations to our Centerton Firecrackers spelling bee winner Addison Higginbotham and runner-up McKenna Watson. Thank you to our spelling bee facilitators, Miss Kelsey Creighton and Miss Katie Arthur.
Our facilitator for Greentown Chapel Elementary is Mrs. Autumn Jones. And she got thrown in last minute, so we really appreciate all of her effort. Our winner for Greentown Chapel Elementary was Beau Craven. And our runner-up is Jennifer Sun.
Good evening. The Perrigan Elementary facilitator was me, so. Thank you so much, everybody. But I'm excited. We had a great battle. Our champion from Perrigan Elementary is Titus Drake. And the Perrigan runner-up, Marina Canoy.
All right, for Poston Red Elementary, thank you so much to Molly Farren for being our facilitator. And congratulations to our winner Grayson Ferguson. And our runner-up, Mason Long.
Hello. For Smith Fine Arts Academy, we had, our champion is not with us tonight, and that was Violet Forler. But Elizabeth Carpenter, our runner-up, is here. And, yes, thank you. And Cassidy Miller is our facilitator. For South Elementary, the facilitator was Jessica Stetter. Thank you, Jessica. And the spelling bee winner was Jamil Orozco. And the runner-up, Leila Thacker.
And Leila's not here. It doesn't sound like. Good evening. For Bell Intermediate Academy, I'd like to thank Stephanie Johnson for getting us through the spelling bee. And my first year's principal, so thank you because she managed everything and I just came and watched. So thank you for that. Our winner is Olivia Jewort. And our runner-up is Ava Hodges.
Hi there. I'm the principal at John R. Wooden, Fred Cutrup. I do want to recognize our facilitator. She's sitting down here. She didn't go up is Krista Matthews. And she does a great job. If Krista, if I'm missing for a couple hours, they may not notice. But Krista does so much for our school. If she's missing, that place would be in turmoil. So we appreciate her. Our champion was Quincy Jordan, won in 12 rounds. In our second place, which we had a tie, they are not here, but that was Xander Besseford and Cassius Garner and Annika Gray. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Van Devender, do we want to do a picture before the students leave in the back or where are we? Thank you so much.
While they are filing back their parents and students, after you're done with the picture, you are free to go. You don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. I heard a woo-hoo from a couple people. Just, yeah, the principals are really excited. Somebody control them.
Thanks, Jeremy. Good seeing you.
Thanks for coming. Hey, take it easy. Congratulations to Titus.
I know I hear them, a lot of chatter there and it's really fantastic. I have to confess, a number of my former students are parents of these kids. I know it wasn't me teaching them that got them there. It was their skills. I know that. But I'm very, very proud to see them and see their students succeeding in the MSD of Martinsville. So welcome to them and congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, I got it. You too. Glad. He's a reader, isn't he? Should I cut something out? I'll crush it. Yes. That's right. You're next. Yeah. Good job. Yes. And he got it. Congratulations. See ya.
Next on our agenda, we have the MSD STEM information. Shannon Adams and Sharon, could come forward, please, and talk about that.
I'll just do a quick introduction. Tonight, we have our district STEM coordinator Sharon Gooden, who's the coordinator of grades K through four, and Shannon Adams, who's the coordinator for grades five through 12. Both Sharon and Shannon have been in this leadership position as district STEM coordinators since 2021. During that time, they have led the charge to obtain approximately $350,000 of grant funding for our district to improve and increase programming opportunities for Martinsville students. While changing the MSD Martinsville's footprint with STEM, Project Lead the Way, skilled trades and industrial technology education, Sharon and Shannon have gained statewide respect in the field. Sharon recently has been invited to speak at a summit in San Diego this October for Project Lead the Way to highlight our elementary programming. So please welcome them tonight, Sharon and Shannon.
This will actually be pretty quick. I don't have a whole lot of words prepped. Neither does Sharon. It's just a quick update. So, Ms. Van Devender, if you could hit the next slide, please. So this is just a brief reminder. When we started this trip in 2021, it was all based on the DOE STEM vision for 2025. And essentially, what they wanted our kids to have was 13 years of consecutive STEM education for all kids. And we have, in fact, done that in Martinsville schools. Our mission was that every kid would have STEM. And then, we have certified an incredible amount of teachers. We have seven certified at the high school, five at Wooden. Now, with the high school and Wooden, remember, those are going to be very specific classes. The big lift is always going to be your elementaries and all plus.
All of our elementary classes are certified. So we have that whole dynamic of.
Also incredibly rare to have that many STEM certified teachers in a district. And in particular, 100% of your K through four. It just doesn't happen. I'm not going to say it's never happened. When I say it doesn't happen, that's a little bit edging on dramatic there. But it is, it's just rare. It's just very rare. I remember sitting in a school board meeting, I think it was in November or December of 2021, and my brain kind of does things a little bit funny. And I saw this in my head. What I saw was what we were offering in all of our K through eight programming. And I knew where kids needed to get because I taught at the high school. So on one side, we have the schools. And on the opposite side, even though that font is so miniscule, no normal eye can read it from your seat, is every potential pathway, graduation pathway required by the state of Indiana. Now for graduation, you must have a pathway. Every potential pathway we offer at Martinsville High School. And I saw that we weren't in bad shape. We were supporting our pathways. But I felt like we could probably do better. So that became a big piece of how Sharon and I designed our plan. And if, Ms. Van Devender, if we can have the next slide. This is what we did with vertical alignment all the way up through the high school in less than two school years. This is completely implemented this year. One tiny caveat, we're still working on that advanced manufacturing. One tiny caveat, we're still working on that advanced manufacturing piece, we will have some robotic arms, small scale, with the littles and at Bell. We're designing all of that curriculum from the ground up, so we're just not sure what it's going to completely look like yet. But we managed to tighten our net and vertically align up through every STEM pathway. Pretty proud of that.
Can you stop right there for a second?
Sure.
If you don't mind, I'd like to interject for a moment. Several weeks ago, we had Dr. Jenner from the state, our superintendent of education. She visited along with Senator Bray, we mentioned that, in a meeting back whenever that occurred. This was one of the things that she was very, very impressed with, was what we have done as a district to go K through, up to the high school, and offer STEM opportunities for our kids. We're not done yet, but it's been a monumental effort, and when people ask about Well Wednesdays, for example, what are, what are we doing? That's where the vertical alignment comes from. It has to happen with the teachers talking at each grade level, all the way up and through. And when you have seven elementaries, an intermediate, and a middle school, all feeding the high school, that's a lot of conversations that have to take place, and a lot of coordination that has to take place. And so, I'm really proud of that slide and what it offers for our kids. And it's just, just the beginning for us, so, great job with that.
Just to piggyback off that for just a brief moment, when we told PLTW what we were doing, what our plan was, particularly with the K through four model, and now the K through six model, when we said that we were offering four modules in every grade level, K through four, they said, "How are you doing it?", and we told them how we were doing it, and they told us, "No one's able to offer four." Now, specialty schools offer all of them. I mean, Brooklyn STEM Academy has been offering this for a while. There is a neighboring district, one of their elementaries does this, the other elementaries do not. So, for every elementary to be offering at least four at every grade level is virtually unheard of, and that is the crux of the reasoning that I'm under, that my, is my understanding that Sharon has been asked to speak in San Diego. This is a new, updated pathway at the high school, very proud of this pathway. It's advanced manufacturing, which we have had, we have machining, and we have other things that are advanced manufacturing, but this is specifically automation and robotics. And automation and robotics is, I don't know if I can say it is the most promoted field by the Department of Workforce and Development with Indiana, because there are, there's about three or four that are very strong, but this is one of them. And this is an incredibly rare pathway to have in a school. We started this last year, we're very excited about this. This is cutting-edge tech that we're getting in front of our kids. Just a couple of quick snippets, we do have the video, I think, that we're showing from that Dr. Jenner's team put together, but we were very excited to host the superintendent of education, and it was as a result of everything that has happened, just this quick snapshot we've given you. And I think just another thing that we're really proud of, the entire investment, when we look at ESSR money, so that COVID funding, we did use a piece of our COVID funding to help get us started, but then a significant portion of what we put into this came from outside grants. For the most part, we have been able to do all of this, all of this complete reimagining, revisioning, realigning, whatever re-word we want to use, we have done all of that without traditional funding from the state of Indiana. We have outsourced all of that funding. Thank you.
... education, what an opportunity we need to have to blur the lines with higher education, and also what's happening in the career options in our state. And here at Martinsville High School, they are doing exactly that. They are helping students to explore and engage with a variety of careers. We want kids to figure out what they're interested in and not interested in, when it's in a safe environment, and it's not taking up your adult time and your adult money.
I haven't done anything like this, I just got thrown at it, and I like, I picked it up really quick. When you do all this, you're setting yourself up for your, like, future job.
Over and over, as students were actively learning, actively engaging with careers, the leaders here would point to various equipment and say, "That was purchased by a state grant", or "That was purchased by the STEM dollars". With an investment of approximately $350,000 in additional grant money, and then about $125,000 pocket of ESSR money, we have completely realigned STEM in Martinsville schools, and we have vertically aligned in every STEM-related graduation pathway, all the way down to kindergarten.
Taxpayers put a lot of money into our school system, it's the largest single-budget item by far in the state of Indiana, and when you take a look at the programs that Martinsville's pushing right now, it's a good investment, and the kids are really getting a lot out.
What a cool opportunity to visit the schools in Martinsville with Senator Bray, to actually point out, here's where our Indiana dollars are going, and here's how we're maximizing learning and opportunities for kids.
I have a quick question for Shannon. How many dual-credit classes are encased in those career pathways? Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I will say, she didn't let me come out to watch one of, a part of her class with the first grade, visiting first grade from Perrigan, and I will say, just in the 30 minutes I was there, they had several standards they were just covering in one sitting. You know, it was a, it was really cool to see problem-solving, art, scientific method, you know, public speaking presentation. So, that was really a cool thing, just to see with first graders. So, I'm, I'm really glad that this is going all the way up, and our district is making those pathways and the vertical alignment to make it a smooth transition grade to grade, so, thank you both, and everybody else who's a part of that. So, as a parent, definitely, definitely appreciated.
No, you are speaking as a parent on that, but I want to thank the board, because the investment that the board has made the last couple years into STEM and into this alignment, that's paying dividends, and it will pay more dividends as we move forward. So, thank you for having the vision to do that.
Yes, thank you both, I know it's a lot of hard work, a lot of time, and that you guys have put into this, and it didn't just happen overnight, so a lot of people are involved, so thank you very much. It just benefits our students in this district, and we're very proud of that, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving along, thank you again. Public comments regarding agenda items. A visitor that wishes to speak regarding an agenda item may do so at the discretion of the president. The visitor will be required to state his or her full name, and given the opportunity to speak, not to exceed three minutes per person. In an effort to fairly adhere to the three-minute guidelines for all speakers, we'll present a timer on the interactive panels. Board members will listen to the speaker, but will not engage in back-and-forth conversations. Forward feedback or answer to questions will be provided before the next board meeting, at the beginning of the next, or at the beginning of the next board meeting, the conclusion of the three minutes. Speakers will be asked to return to their seats. It shall not be permissible to orally present or discuss complaints against individual employees of the MSD of Martinsville at any Board of Trustees meeting. Such charges or complaints shall be presented to the Board of Trustees in writing, and shall be signed by the person making the charge or complaint. Ostrous conduct shall not be permitted at any meeting of the Board of Trustees, or will any defamatory evidence of the march tolerated. We appreciate everyone's accountability in maintaining business order, as it has been in practice at school board meetings. And do we have any speakers for the agenda items? Okay, moving along then. The next on the agenda is the consent agenda. So, board members, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to split the consent agenda, keep one and four together, just have five on its own.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do the splitting of one and four, Dan?
Yeah, I just want five on its own.
Five on its own.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded? All those in favor of doing this, of doing one and four, and then five separately, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. So, we will vote on one, two, three, four, and six, correct? Do I have a motion for the consent agenda on those, one through four and six?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through four and item six.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda on items one through four and six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign? Motion carry. And next, we have a motion, or do we have any discussion on item five?
Yeah, the reason I'd like to discuss item five just for a second, the personnel report shows, we're replacing the contracted counseling for four people for the elementary schools, and just on the transparency side of that, the ESSR counseling monies are going away, so this is going to be added into the budget, where we're going to have to cut or make adjustments somewhere in the budget for this to fit into the budget. So, that money's going away, I would like to see the numbers, because it'll come with pay and benefits for those folks, if they're working, you know, how many hours are they working today, how many hours are they going to be working in the future? I would just like to see that, so everybody knows that's what we're looking at. So, I'm not against a discussion of that, I just don't like to pass that without having that conversation and see that specific number, and I think that's what we're going to work on doing this.
But Mr. Bowen, we did, just to piggyback on that, we have a level, like we have a ceiling for that, right, as we discussed previously, so.
Correct. Whenever we have any new employees, we have a scale that we place an employee on, based on their years of experience, whether it be years of experience in the school realm, or years of experience now in the business world, because that can play a part as well. So, it all depends on each individual's experience level and where they get placed on the scale, if that makes sense. So, nobody would be placed above where any teacher would come in at the same level. And historically, over the last couple of years, unfortunately, in the state of Indiana, teaching profession, the pipeline is very, very limited, very small, it's at a trickle what it used to be. You used to put out a job posting for a certified position, a teaching position. So, social studies, I'd have over 100 applicants. Today, we might get two. That's the difference, that's the reality. Same thing plays a part with certified staff or support staff, it's hard to get people to get into the education field. And over the last few years, last year, or this year, we have 27 new staff members, teachers, 27 that started this school year. Last year, we were in the 40s. Three years ago, it was up around that level as well. So, from our vantage point, we know that we're going to have attrition, there is always attrition, and we're just wanting to make sure that we earmark and get these people into employee status, because the elementary principals, they're, one of their number-one priorities was to make sure that we had this type of service for our elementary students, so that they can get kids back into the classroom, get them taken care of, so they can get in for teaching and learning. Instead of, you know, as you see with the way the world is today, there's a lot of emotional stress, a lot of pressures on families, a lot of pressures on kids, so that's, that's the whole realm. We would, we'll do what we can to get that for, for Dan, I know exactly what he's looking for, we just wanted to make sure that we got a commitment to these people, they're looking for jobs next year, because they're, they're wanting a job next year as well. So, we wanted to get a commitment from the board, hey, this is what we're going to do, and you all are going to be employees for the MSD of Martinsville. We will just, through attrition, make sure that we have you on staff, if that makes sense.
And just to clarify, they are replacing themselves, basically, I mean, they were paid out of ESSR dollars, yes, we understand that, but it's not like they're going to make double the amount by us hiring them as an actual employee, not a contracted person, they'll be on the teacher contract, they'll be on the teacher contract. And they already work in our building, so staff is familiar with them, students are comfortable with them.
Yeah, it sounds pretty transparent to me that we've already discussed this already.
And there was a unanimous with all of the principals?
Yes.
Everybody was, okay.
Yeah, and I think the 37, 79, or whatever we pay on the bills when we authorize that per hour, it changes when you have benefits and wages to it, and the discussion to be had, to see it as transparent as possible. It's not apples to apples when you haven't had them on payroll, it's ESSR money that's going away, people just need to understand that, that's going to hit the books.
Yes.
That's all the conversation is.
And it is, Mr. Conway's absolutely right, obviously, whenever you have a contract person, whether it be ESSR dollars or contract dollars, we do that too for some sped positions, it's just a dollar amount. I might sign somebody on for $50,000. Well, if you throw benefits in, and they get on a scale at 50,000, well, the benefits add another 20%, approximately. So, obviously, that's a bigger hit than the 50,000 is. So, that's just part of it, but we do that with, you know, that's, that's what happens with employees whenever they come onboard with benefits.
We know through attrition, we will lose teachers, and these positions are going to take the place of some of those who have benefits as well.
Correct.
That should even it out, I would think.
Well, we always hope that the ones we lose are the ones that are retiring more than just leaving, going into other professions, but in today's environment, we lose teachers every day going to the business world. One of our parents here tonight, we lost last year going to the business world, and I offered her, I said, "You can come back anytime you want, anytime, outstanding teacher", she knows who she is. But that's what happens to us, and we need to try to, to attract and keep the best people for our kids, because our kids deserve it. And that's the whole goal for this, is to, we've got some great people working with them right now, we want to make sure that they don't go Cibleymington, or Morrisville, or another surrounding school corporation. But I do appreciate the question and the discussion.
I move to approve the personnel report.
There's been a motion to approve the personnel report, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the personnel report, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carry. Moving along, Eric, you have student field.
Yeah, we do have, we have, the MSD Orchestra is going to be going to Washington DC, and it's going to be next year, not this year, because you look on there, and it was February 15th through 18th, we'd have to be going in time warp. It is for next year, but they wanted to get this on the calendar and get this approved, so they can do their fundraising, and I think Mrs. Lanigan does an unbelievable job, our orchestra, our music department is fantastic, our performing arts department is fantastic, and this, this will be great for the kids. And this, this will be great for the kids, great for the kids. So, I recommend approval of that. And the last one we have is Glazer Football Clinic, Cody Wilkerson, who is a new hire that we have. And we stole him from Franklin College. I didn't say that out loud, did I? We did attract him from Franklin College and he is now teaching at the high school and will work in our football program there as well. He did some coaching there at Franklin, so it's a great hire for us and he's going to be attending. And no district funds funded on that. So, I would recommend approval of both these trips.
Do I have a motion to approve both the MSD Orchestra overnight and also the Glazer Football Clinic for Cody Wilkerson?
I'll make a motion that we approve the student field trip and professional travel.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the student field trips and professional travel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Motion is what, Rachel?
Good evening, everyone. Climate survey, a way to view the success of a school is to gauge the pulse of the school's climate. Therefore, this month, the MSD of Martinsville surveyed the entire staff. On the display panels, you will see the results. This poll survey was aimed at checking the overall prevailing trend of public opinion in the buildings and throughout the district. Approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three staff members responded, which is approximately thirty-five percent of our total staff. According to some sources, a good survey response is one that would be anything above twenty-five percent. Research shows that strong relationships are based on communication, transparency, and trust, qualities that school relationships also value. As you review this data, you will see that eighty-nine point three percent believe that they have a voice and someone in our district who will listen to them. Ninety-four point eight percent of the responders indicated that they have access to district information that they need. And ninety-six point six percent are happy about working in the MSD of Martinsville. Our staff survey data this year is higher in every category compared to the staff survey that was issued in two thousand and twenty-one. Overall, the feedback provides a positive tone, giving us promise that the district is working to meet the needs of the Martinsville school community. Another piece of feedback that we have for the board this month is our Well Wednesday progress report data. On the slides, you will see that data presented. The MSD of Martinsville distributed Well Wednesday progress reports to students, all staff, and parents. Approximately nine-hundred-and-seventy-six students responded. One-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-one families responded. Fourteen administrators responded. Two-hundred-and-three teachers and one-forty-three classified staff. Eighty-nine percent of our nine-hundred-and-seventy-six students indicated they personally were improving academically because they are earning higher scores on assessments like N W E A, Classroom Test, Study Island, STAR, and I Ready. For improvement with Well Wednesdays, students suggest incorporating e-learning days, making specials times longer, and more recess. With families' responses, families suggested for improvement, raise taxes so teachers can be paid overtime to collaborate and train, publish a report on what teachers are doing during Well Wednesdays, do e-learning for students. Families indicated the positives of Well Wednesdays of extra sleep for their tweens and athletes, scheduling appointments on Wednesday mornings, and it's safer to go in school in the daylight according to parents. The big difference this year was noted as the available and free before-school childcare. Two administrator suggestions for improvement with facilitation of Well Wednesdays are to determine a more aligned way to deliver information and to move the new teacher meetings back to after-school so the new teachers do not miss any building-level P L C time. Administrators cite the most valuable components of Well Wednesdays are collaboration time to review data and plan instructional strategies, time to evaluate and respond to students' successes and struggles, and the opportunity for, for training such as the science of reading training that has led to schedule changes and high-quality techniques incorporated into lessons. Teachers indicate that the most impactful components for their teaching with Well Wednesdays are the avail, the availability of all staff to meet together and collaborate in P L Cs, the grade level and vertical alignment meetings that allow teachers to address learning gaps, the work that the district principals and teacher leaders help implement, the opportunities for, for professional development. Teachers provided many ways that their teaching was strengthened and students were benefited. A few are better serve the needs of students, increase morale, sharing resources throughout the district, and better coordination and communication. Of the hundred-and-forty-two classified staff who responded to the Well Wednesday progress report, fifty-four, which is thirty-eight percent of those, were instructional assistants. By department, food service responded with the lowest rating for smooth facilitation with a two-point-eight-three out of a five rating, while other departments rated clinic four-point-eight, instructional assistance four-point-two-nine out of five, maintenance four-point-one out of five, office support four-point-seven-five, security four, and technology five out of five, and transportation three-point-five-seven out of five. It is important to remember that Well Wednesday time is to use support rigorous classroom instruction. Well Wednesday time is not for regular staff meetings. The purpose of Well Wednesday is to provide a time for professional learning that is instructionally focused. One important curricular upcoming district event is next week on February twenty-first, we have an eighth-grade student-parent open house and a Martinsville High School academic and programming showcase at the Martinsville High School Field House. It begins at six o'clock in the auditorium for parents and students of eighth graders and any incoming student that might be interested in participating and enrolling in Martinsville schools. After we're in the auditorium for an introduction from Mr. Bell, the high school principal, we'll move to the field house where all the departments will be represented and we'll have a showcase of the academic opportunities for our students. Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Lips. Now, Mr. Bowen, do you have a score?
Yeah, we have the Form Nine that was provided to you. There's no action to be taken on that. It's report information only. And then we have number three, first read, no vote at this time, accounting system for capital assets. We are going through the audit currently and the recommendation is to lower the amount from ten thousand dollars to five thousand so we identify more capital assets and get them on our list. So, that would be something that we would vote on in the next, that's the recommendation.
Next, we have old business.
Okay, so I would like to tag onto what Mrs. Lips said on, on the Well Wednesday part and some conversation about new teachers. We had, we have a number of new teachers, as I stated just a short bit ago. And a number of our new teachers are not trained teachers in the, in college training courses. They come from the business world or they come from private sector in some manner. So, they are learning the methodology and the methods of teaching by us. Our mentors and our administrators and colleagues are training the teachers as they're learning on the fly. And it's not easy. And that's one of the things that we talked with ten, I think it was ten, of our secondary new teachers the other day. And that was one of the big items for them. It's like, we don't know if we could do this without this time to be able to collaborate and learn what's going on and know how to teach. Now, some of them had already been experienced teachers and they thought it was very, very beneficial. One lady, we'll have her speak here at an upcoming meeting. She was a parent before and she is now teaching in one of our schools. And she said, as a parent, she hated Well Wednesdays because she thought it was just time off for teachers. You know, hey, they're going to take a couple of hours off. Just so you know, that's not what they're doing. But she said, now I'm teaching and it's like, I don't know how I would do this. You know, how valuable that time is. And that tells us that we haven't done a great job of informing the community of what we are doing on Well Wednesday. So, that, we're going to do a better job of that as administration team to let everybody know they're not coming in two hours later and coming in with their coffee from Starbucks. They're, they are going at it with the trainings that are required. We have trainings from the state. We have P L C time and some goals for each building, for each grade level. And it seems like there's hardly ever enough time. And you saw one of the recommendations is to take the new teachers and move them to after-school because the P L C time is so valuable that they're missing out on some of that whenever we've got them in trying to teach them how to teach. So, you know, we're sort of caught betwixt and between on that. So, that's something we'll take into consideration and, and change that as we move forward next year. That's a great recommendation and we don't want them to miss out on that time with their colleague. Now, obviously, grade levels with seven elementaries, my goodness, trying to, you know, some elementaries only have one person at a grade level. Now, they need to be collaborating and talking. That's what we use that time for, so they can talk with buildings, other teachers in other buildings. It's, that's important too. That's also important for our vertical alignment. This past week, we've had Bell and the middle school and the high school meeting together. Now, obviously, each grade level, each subject area tackles P L Cs differently. You know, there's an anomaly out there. Our vocational department, which you see a lot of push on vocational, and Mr. Deckard's sitting over here underneath the TV hiding out, he could tell you their P L Cs is a lot different than you're going to get with math, language arts, science, social studies, or some of the others where there are more people. They have six people sat around and, and they all are totally different areas that, that they're working on. So, each area has their own specificity of, of topics and goals and stuff they're working on. And each one can do a little better than some of the others because this is fledgling for us. Not all buildings, they just started the elementaries, all of them, last year in the P L C process. It's not easy to implement that. A colleague of mine said at one of our conferences several years ago, he said, you don't do P L Cs. P L C stands for professional learning community. And Mr. Pillar said, you become a P L C, a professional learning community. What's that mean? That means feeling comfortable collaborating, feeling comfortable failing, which is really hard for a teacher to do because most teachers, they were excellent students. They didn't fail. And to tell them it is okay to try something and fail in it and find that it didn't work that way and to turn around and try something else, that is education. That is learning. John Wooden said, I am pretty sure somebody who hasn't made mistakes isn't doing anything. Now, that is a paraphrase, but he's absolutely right. And then you could also use another one of his quotes, which is the other end of that spectrum, which is, don't mistake activity for achievement. So, just because we're doing something doesn't necessarily mean we're achieving it either. So, we have to do the best job we can of, of making sure we're accountable to ourselves and to our students and to our parent groups and to our families and our school community. That's what we have to do a real good job of. We're getting better at it, but we're not perfect and we're going to continue to grow and get better with this. So, I just wanted to put that out there and share that.
Thank you.
Sorry about that moment. You know how I am sometimes. Okay, the last thing I had on the old business, solar eclipse, we're not canceling it. So, everybody knows it's going to happen. As you know, April eighth, we are on asynchronous learning, which means the lessons are put out there. Students have a, a week, basically, to get that stuff done and get it turned in. It is not real-time learning. April ninth, we're on e-learning, but it is real-time learning, April ninth. Now, we've had some people ask, I've had parents, I've had staff ask about the e-learning days in place of the P L C time. Well, we only get three asynchronous days in the course of the year. That's it. The rest of the days have to be synchronous, which means real-time learning with the teachers in place, talking with students via Zoom or one of the platforms. That's real-time learning and they have to have a schedule and they have to meet criteria in order to have synchronous learning. Well, we can't have P L Cs if they're doing synchronous learning. They can't collaborate and do that. So, that's why we're sort of hamstrung with only three asynchronous days. And we have like tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, who knows what the weather's going to be like. We've been fortunate the last couple of years not to have lost a lot of days to snow or something, but that can happen. We know it. This is Indiana. So, we protect those asynchronous days as much as possible. And I know parents are out there sometimes like, why can't they have a good old-fashioned snow day? Well, the last one we had was a good old-fashioned snow day. But we only get three of those in the course of the year. That's it. So, I just wanted to address, make sure you mark your calendars. It's going to be a wild time, April eighth. I see a science person in the room here and Krista can tell us all about it. I know they probably doing some fun stuff in the classroom for that. But asynchronous on the eighth, synchronous, real-time on the ninth. Did I cover that okay? I'm done with that. All right, action items. Thank you. You keep me rolling right along. Morgan County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Resolution, you have that. I would recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve the Morgan County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Resolution.
I'll make a motion to pass it. Morgan County Multi-Hazard.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Can I have a second to pass the Morgan County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Resolution? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
The next one is Resolution four sixty-four, Early Literacy Achievement Grant Stipends. We have put a lot of focus on early reading programs, science of reading. And the board, you have done a great job supporting us on that and it's one of the big pushes of the state. So, I recommend approval of Resolution four six four.
Okay, do we have a motion to, to approve Resolution four six four, Early Literacy Achievement Grant Stipend?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution four sixty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the Resolution four sixty-four, Early Literacy Achievement Grant Stipends. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
I'm going to combine, if it's okay with the board, three and four, which are M O Us, one with the city and our Martinsville Police Department, and number four is the County Sheriff's Department with our local police department. So, I would recommend approval of both of these M O Us.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the City of Martinsville Police and the Morgan County Sheriff's Department Memo of Understanding?
I'll make a motion to approve both of the M O Us for the Police Department and Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Memo of Understanding for the Morgan County Sheriff's Department and the City of Martinsville Police. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign? All those opposed? Motion carried.
Number five, Morgan County Health Department MOU, recommend approval.
Okay, we have a memo of understanding for the Morgan County Health Department. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Morgan County Health Department MOU. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Memo of Understanding for the Morgan County Health Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Number six is permission to apply the flexibility waiver, which is the Well Wednesday platform. Uh, that is open for the state. Everybody has an opportunity to apply. You don't have one hundred percent of what you have, but you have to have the application to go in and the board has final say on what that will look like. I recommend approval for the application.
Okay, do we have?
Can we discuss that a little bit?
Yes, you may.
A couple of things I got on that. And I guess when we look at the survey that was done on the polls, do we know what twenty twenty-one percentage of participation?
The climate survey?
Yeah.
Um, yes, it was on the sheets. One hundred and eighty staff members responded in twenty twenty-one and in twenty twenty-four, two hundred and thirty-three staff members responded.
What percent of your staff? You said?
Seventy-seven point five percent of the staff responded.
I think you're talking about totality, the number. Okay, when you mentioned the thirty, thirty-something.
So sixty-five percent didn't do it in twenty twenty-four. Do we know that in twenty twenty-one or is that, that's something we can probably get later?
Yeah, we can get that.
Yeah.
Now, on that survey, that was confidential, no one knew anybody's name. So when we looked at the survey for the Well Wednesday, I know when I filled it out as a parent, I had to put my name in on it. So did the staff have to do that? Did the staff have to say? I thought the staff did, I know the parents did when we did our survey for the Well Wednesday. Okay. Okay. So that was my question.
As a parent, as a parent, you didn't, as a bus driver.
And one of the issues on that is staff is in our domain, so you don't have to do that. Um, parents.
Probably know who it is or is there?
It's, it does not have to be checked for that. Like ours, we don't collect that for staff.
So do we have the percent that completed it from that? I don't see that in there. I see a number, but I, I'm just asking for a percentage. Okay, and I think that's, that's important when we look at. I filled it out because I didn't care. I thought it was important for me, to be honest. I think a lot of people didn't fill it out because I had to put someone's name in it. If it's a staffing, just what percent completed it? So the data is the data. I mean, I think the survey, anytime you look at a survey, you can, questions are very, how do you read them?
Sure.
If I put my name to it, am I gonna do it? A lot of people didn't. I talked, that's, that's needed to know. But I think just having that conversation about percent of staff. For the staff. So just having that percent. I know as a parent, it was required, so you couldn't get past it as a parent.
And that's because parents are not in our domain, so we have to have them in or something, so it's not, some bot is.
So that they can't do it a multitude of times.
Yeah, so I think just the percentage of what percent of your staff did, what percent of maybe the, the parents, uh, it's thirty percent or forty percent. And when sixty-five percent don't do a survey, I think when you look at, how can we get more people to do the survey? Why do they not do the survey? I, I, I don't know. I think I've done surveys where ninety percent of people did the survey, so I don't know what a good number is when I look at changes that we're having on, on that. And when I look at the well piece, I mean, I hear from a lot of the bus drivers, the staff, and, and I think just looking at what is the best balance? Is it in the morning, is it in the afternoon? I know there's not a lot of taste in the afternoon because it is a distraction. I was, I'm just thinking outside the boxes, you know, once every five weeks have a, a Wednesday. You just do e-learning and you get everybody together if it's important to coach and mentor your bench, then create a day for it. I don't know if that's a feasible option, but to take away the daily distraction of the routine of some of these kids, and my kids don't have an issue with it. And I, I know a lot of people probably have kids, it's not a big deal, it's your household. There's a lot of households in the community that it is. And the bus drivers are very vocal, uh, about kids, how they act on Wednesday versus Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Just listening to the public as much as possible, looking at the data. I'm not saying I wouldn't say push it up, but I think we need to have more dialogue and, and make sure people feel comfortable talking about it. Uh, I'd just like to see the percentages to see how many people.
Sure.
Fill it out when you look at any type of data.
Going with, uh, the recommendation you had, I, I would address the asynchronous because if we had the e-learning, if you went every five weeks, for example, uh, with, we, we couldn't hit enough because we only get three asynchronous days for those PLCs that we would have. So we would have all those other days where teachers would have to be doing the real-time learning, so they really don't have a PLC time. So I understand the concept, but right now with the, now, two years ago or three years, three years ago, we could have done that because it was asynchronous, you didn't have to have, uh, the synchronous part. They changed that a couple of years ago.
But this is just permission to apply, this isn't, you know.
Correct.
Again, we can discuss that when it actually comes up, if it does come up, the, the state may deny it. Um, but this is just, just to clarify, so everyone out there understands this is just permission to apply for it. Doesn't mean we're approving it and it doesn't mean we're going to agree with what you may bring to us.
Yeah, one of the, uh, big points, because I was a, you know, I'll be open to everybody. I was a proponent of the early release versus the late arrival. Uh, over the last, um, two years, teachers have, I've listened to them and, uh, I have, with the new teachers, for example, and the principals, I have realized that there were hurdles that they couldn't overcome with early release. For example, administrators are ta, putting out fires at the end of the day. That's what they're doing. They are really, they're tied up with the bus issue, they're tied up with the discipline issue, they're tied up with the vaping issue, they're tied up with the suicidal ideation issue, whatever that might be. That's what they're tied up doing and you're going to spend another hour or so, uh, calling parents and calling guardians and calling families and calling the police sometimes to try to take care of it. You're not around for PLCs at that point, which they're the educational leaders in the building. And if they're not there, it's kind of hard to hold them accountable for, hey, your building's not improving enough, but we're not giving them the time to do it. So that was one of the things I heard and so I was like, okay, I can teach an old dog new tricks. I understood what they were saying. And, uh, so now I would say, I like the early morning. I, nothing's perfect, but I think for the betterment of getting better teaching and learning in the classroom, um, and improving our instruction, which is our overall goal. We do have some hurdles with it, but we offered the free childcare. That was a big hurdle for some, we've heard from some people that they've taken advantage of it. Not a lot, it's amazing how, um, flexible some people are. We understand those struggles, we really do, but we're, we're getting stuff out of it.
I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I mean, I, as a board member, you know, I want to see, is it working? Like, I, I need data, um, not so much maybe from the survey, like if they want early release or, you know, a late arrival, but is it working? Is what we're doing right now working? You know, i- is that improving our scores? That's the goal, helping kids improve in scores. Is that working? That's what we would like to know, I think, and, and, um, and you've given us some information with that too, but you know, obviously, some of the testing hasn't been completed yet.
Right.
So we'll be looking at that and digging deep and analyzing that information. So, so again, this is just permission to apply. It's not that we're agreeing to anything and we're not even saying that we would agree to it when you bring it to us.
Luke, you were going to say something because I was wanting to follow up on what you said.
And I was going to say with the NWA going away, you know, are we going to have still a good balance to look at this year? You know, to, to judge with, because is it next year they go to a different?
If, if you recall that when Dr. Jenner was here, and I think you might have heard her speak, uh, the state is going to a new model, which is similar to NWEA. In other words, three assessments during the course of the year. That's what they're, that's the area they're shooting for now. So that you get multiple assessments and then the state is going to provide, um, shall we say, some remediation or some enrichment opportunities with that data that they get real-time, right then, for the teachers to actually use in the classroom. That's the state's goal. That's what they're pushing for. It's one of Dr. Jenner's, uh, big, big pushes moving forward. And that's the only reason we would go away from NWEA is to use the state's model. Uh, the first year, it's voluntary for schools to join it. Makes no sense not to use the state's resources whenever they're the ones that's writing the test and they're the ones that's going to be telling you, this is what we're going to be doing and this is where your kids are falling short or need help or need enrichment. Uh, so that's why, that's the only reason we would go away from NWEA. They're going to that model. Now, if they come out the end of the year and say, that model is not in place, we will go back with NWEA because we will not be able to use their model. Because data, like, uh, Mrs. Deckard's pointing out, that's what we need. But we don't have two years of I read and I learn data yet. This is the second year and that's the frustrating part. It just takes a while to get that.
It, it does and I, I don't want anyone to misunderstand. I absolutely one hundred percent care what our parents and what our staff wants to do, um, and what's best for them, but I also want that data.
Yes, that's important.
To test data.
Because if we find out, like, uh, I know once, one state, I won't mention them, uh, especially on virtual platform, uh, they found out that one of their programs at kindergarten failed miserably, right? Well, you find out it fails miserably, you better not be using that anymore. So if we find out with data that we're going in the wrong direction, we got to change something. Some variable in the equation has to change, uh, because Einstein's definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. So we're, we're making some changes and, uh, we're getting better, but data will be important for us.
And, and I understand that this is just an application to do this, but when we, when we throw this out here without the data of how many people participated, that's where, it could look a little misleading. And then you look at scores, we've implemented grants and people to go in and strategically address some scores. So will scores improve? If the scores don't improve, we have a major issue because we've invested grant money and people that are going into some of those lower areas. So even when the scores go into, you still got to assess the whole bundle and we know that. So I, I don't think you could just say, I, I agree the scores are the key, is it going to improve? But these schools that were struggling will improve because we've invested resources in there to make that happen. And I, and we've heard great results, uh, we've mentioned that before. We're starting to see the trends go, as they should, because we're investing resources.
And I, and if I can, just say, you know, as I am a parent, you know, I've seen both of my kids', you know, scores come back and they were at a location that was struggling compared to last year and their scores have drastically, just the two of them gone up, especially in the, the reading literature section. I don't know if that's, we'll find out, you know, if that's the case across the board, but I will say there's a lot of, there is, I can see at least some anecdotal improvement, you know, especially working with the, the read-up kids. There's a big difference compared to last year, you know, to this year. So it, it, there is, like Dan said, and Jackie, you know, the investments being put into it and seeing the data is good. You know, that's a, that's a good, good thing to see.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, do I have a motion for the permission to apply for the flexibility waiver for Well Wednesday?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, approve the, the application, uh, for the flexibility waiver.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to, for permission to apply for the flexibility waiver for Well Wednesday? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I want to say thank you to you because that's not easy, right? And, uh, I liked the discussion because it's the most discussion I've had on this topic. So I appreciate that very much. Okay, um, next one is an important one, approval of the EMA installation of a tornado siren at Perrigan Elementary. Um, this is really important for that area of the county, so I recommend approval of this.
We have a motion for the approval of EMA installation of a tornado siren at Perrigan Elementary.
I'll make the motion, we approve the EMA installation of a tornado siren at Perrigan Elementary.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded of approval of an EMA installation of a tornado siren at Perrigan Elementary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is, uh, the acceptance of an E-rate for wireless network, new wireless network. Uh, it's an E-rate rating for us, which means the, uh, we get a grant for eighty percent of it, twenty percent we pay and we're going to be able to upgrade our wireless system throughout the district. So it'd be all upgraded new. I, I see a few applauding, uh, from staff how important that is. So maybe we won't see the little buffering thing near as much. So, uh, I recommend approval. We don't want that to be our icon, right? We don't, we want the well and wellness to be our icon. But I recommend approval of the E-rate. New wireless system.
I'll make a motion to approve the E-rate acceptance.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the E-rating acceptance for wireless network. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Okay, the next one is approval of the Martinsville High School Chromebook Refresh. It's there on five years and it's time to get the next batch. So I recommend approval, uh, of the Chromebooks for the high school level.
Matt, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the Martinsville High School Chromebook Refresh. What do we do with the old Chromebooks?
Some of them get repurposed, right? Um, after five years, it's a, some of them you don't want to repurpose. Um, some parents know that, they know what I'm talking about, but some do. And we tried to push down and keep as many as we can for the, uh, grades below.
Is there ever an opportunity for students to keep those that maybe don't have?
I don't know what our policy has been on that. We can look into that. Um, because I have no problem with it, but we have to look at the policy because it is, it would be a surplus. We'd have to identify in the surplus and find how we would go about doing that.
So is that what you do with them now? You, you identify them as surplus and then, and there are companies who would, um, buy them back, Heather, and, you know, you wouldn't get the actual cost of what we paid out for them, but there are companies who will buy those back as well. So we could look at that as well.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to, for the Martinsville High School Chromebook Refresh. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next one is the Verizon contract. This allows us, uh, to purchase items, hotspots, um, those type of items at the state mandated price. It's like a co-op buying thing and, uh, so I recommend approval of the Verizon contract.
Do I have a motion for the Verizon contract?
I'll move to approve the Verizon contract. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Verizon contract. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I'm sorry? Motion carried.
Trying to be a good community neighbor, the next one is transferring ownership of the Perrigan Bell to the Perrigan Home Coming Committee.
Matt, I'll abstain from this vote since I'm a member of the committee.
Then I'll make a motion to approve. And I'm going to second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to transfer the ownership request from the Perrigan Bell to the Perrigan Home Coming Committee. All those in favor of the motion, transfer ownership request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
The, uh, next one is the Sources of Strength Grant. Uh, this is for Suicide Prevention Program for MSD of Martinsville Students. So I recommend approval of this.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Matt, can we discuss this?
Yeah.
I did some research on this one. I get these grants, first thing I do is dive into them, look at it, see what we have in the grants. Uh, this one's very interesting as you get into it. Again, it's got some really good things in it. It talks a lot of the right messaging that we want to get into. As you dive into this, and I don't know how many people dove deep into it, but I look at some of the sponsors. I see CNN in here, NIH, Black Dog, Colorado Department of Health and Environment, you know, State of Colorado. You go to their website, talking about marijuana right out the gate. Uh, you know, some of these grants that are free, I think we need to be very selective on what we get. And when we look at them, I would like to see them earlier just so we can go through this and maybe everyone can go through it. But when you look at some of the different, uh, programs, you, you dive into this, I don't know what the curriculum's going to look like. I know the cost piece sounds free. When you look at the cost from their own website, it gets into the weeds. it gets into the weeds quite a bit, talks about if we were paying for it, what would it cost? And then if we're going to pay for it hypothetically, you compare it way, if we bought this, it's going to cost $30,000. Or if we bought something that we believe in as a conservative community, I'm not sure this is that direction. I spent about two hours digging into it. It's got a lot of stuff in it. I mean, I just think you need to look at these things closer. We apply for stuff. I'd like to look at some of the things we're applying for and see what exactly it is as we go through those challenges, just to make sure. What's it going to take up? How are we going to implement this in the curriculum? And then how much, what are we going to do? Add this to the existing curriculum? We just approved something last year with Indiana tied to it, to where it's talking about some of the same stuff. So we're going to take all these different grants, blend it in? What's the availability to do that? I don't know. It's, this one's very interesting as we go through it. It's just not as simple as it sounds to say it's a, it's a grant that we're going to look at. So I'm concerned with the sponsors a little bit. I'm concerned with some of the messaging. I just think we've got to watch some of this stuff and say, okay. I'd rather buy something for 30 grand than get something for free. I mean, I really would. There's different programs out there. But again, just my two cents. I mean, this thing's rough when you look at some of the things. There's a ton of things that you want to work on in suicide prevention, bullying. I get all of that. It's just, where's it coming from? Who controls it? I mean, you can go online tonight and look at it. I hope people are looking at it right now because this one's probably the most concerning one that I've seen yet. So that's my two cents.
For the, no, I was going to say, for the, looking at it, it looked like it was, you know, kind of like our Anti-Bullying League expanded more, identifying adult leaders, growing peer groups so that they can be kind of the influence in their area. Do we have, do we have adults already identified? Or, or how would we select the peer groups? Would that be kind of the same method as the Anti-Bullying League?
Yeah, very similar because you have the principals and you have the counselors now. I was at a, a meeting with our superintendent's group. We are in a study group. There's about 20 of us. And we had a question in a recent meeting, how many have counselors at the elementaries full-time? And all of them do. Well, we just did. We just joined that arena just a couple of years ago and we did it through ESER. So the need is there. We know that. And we've dealt with suicide here. Suicide is real. The emotional component is, is real. And what Mr. Conway is addressing is very true. I mean, you have monies that come in, but we have our principals, we have our counselors, and we have our staff that work with these kids. They are the ones that identify the kids. They're the ones that know the kids. They're the ones that know the families. And to any support, I, I'm a firm believer in this local control. I'm a firm believer in that. And if CNN gave me $100,000 right now, I really don't care what CNN preaches. I'm going to use the $100,000 to the best of my ability to help our kids to do what we can do with them. And I hope that the community, number one, has faith in us to do what's right for our kids. That's why you put me here. And that's what we will do. Now, some of them might have strings attached. And if we find strings attached, that's the thing that you don't want, is what type of strings are there attached? And this one comes from IDOE. This one comes from the state of Indiana as well. And the state of Indiana, as you've noticed, has made a big push on STEM and we've been at the forefront. The state of Indiana's made a big push on the science of reading and this board in this district has been on the forefront. We are there doing that. And the state of Indiana is making a big push on suicide prevention, that aspect of things. And I think it'd be important for us to give our staff whatever resources we can. But I think we need, we will do a better job of getting you the grants quicker. But the only thing is it rolls out and they put a cycle on. And I guess once it gets out, we got to get it, get it out to you quicker, right?
Right. And, and I think, you know, we, we perform our due diligence. I don't think, you know, and this is my fourth year on the board, I've never approved a grant that I haven't looked at or, you know, found where the resources, where it came from or whatever. And you're right, Eric. I mean, it depends on certain strings. You know, we might want to say, oh, yes, we don't want that one or this one. We don't want to be associated with. But I get what you're saying. So, and you're right, suicide's real. And we need to put these topics head-on.
For the, I'm sorry. I was going to say, for the training session, is it March 26th? Is that, I'm thinking in my mind.
It's in March, yes.
Is that, would that be okay, just, just to come and?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I think, not, not just for teachers, but any of us in the community. At, at least I think myself selfishly, you know, a minister, you know, we deal, do deal with that some. So if that would be okay to come to?
Yes, we'll make sure that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good to get the Ministerial Association, bring them in and with them. Because we work with them anyway. So this would be a good avenue. We have wraparound supports now in our, we have some great supports in different organizations throughout, which is helpful.
Yeah, Dr. Jenner, when she was here, she said that, you know, grants that they make available, they vet, they make sure that those are the grants that they feel comfortable with Indiana schools pursuing. And just like Superintendent Boland said, if we can save one family, you know, a tragedy of suicide, I think our investment with this is definitely worth it.
I was just going to say that I've, with some of you, attended a funeral for a student. And that's probably one of the worst things that I've ever done. So if we could save one kid, that's worth it.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I'm not saying it's not. When you look at, how many, how many versions do you need coming in to make the best decision for the school group? Is, here's another one. So what was the last one? What are you going to take from that? What are you going to take from this? What are you going to take from this? Get one that fits the bill and say, this is our vision. We're going to break the huddle and say, this is our vision. I feel bad for some of the groups that have to inherit different programs and say, I'll take this from this, this from this. Again, how many do we have now? I mean, I don't know. I know we've approved a couple that I would question to say, does this fit? Where are we going? And to your point, I agree. We got to protect our kids. That's the number one reason we take these roles, is to do the right thing. I just want to make sure we're not hitting 15 versions of, okay, well, this is what everybody wants. This is free. This is free. Spend $100,000 and make a good decision.
Right.
That's fine with me. I'd rather do that. I'd throw all this free stuff away if you find the one that you're passionate about that makes the most sense.
And one of the issues we run into in education, which, great discussion, nothing they have is canned, whole, complete, and foolproof. It's not. The educators out here know that. Parents know that. It'd be great to have a silver bullet that would take care of some of these issues. And we have to piecemeal some things. Unfortunately, we had to piecemeal just to be able to get counselors in the elementary schools. We piecemealed it. And if we hadn't gone that route, we wouldn't have had them. And that's a blessing. But it is, still comes back to the resources that we put our, and I trust our administrators. That's one thing I do. We have great administrators. And I want them, I want to listen to them, hear what they need, and trust them that the resources that they have that are coming to them, that they're using in the best way possible to fit the mission of our district and what is best for our kids, the vision, vision and mission.
Well, unfortunately, you know, the money we have in our budget is the money we have. So I think we do a very good job with the resources that we have. So.
Now, if we were buying, sorry to interrupt you there, Mrs. Deckard. If, if we were buying this canned program, this canned program, and none of them have any, we're not implementing them with fidelity, then we have a problem. And that, that can happen. Not saying it's never happened. But that's something we have to be vigilant on. And I appreciate the request to try to get it out there to you a little earlier. We'll do the best we can to get it to you all as soon as possible.
You cling to what's good and you discard what's bad.
Like a harvest.
We did receive this notice about this grant and it was in January. And I think that in your communication in January 26th, this was sent to the board. January 26th communication.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the sources of strength grant.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the Sources of Strength Grant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carry.
No.
Next? I'm sorry, did I say oppose? All opposed? Okay, aye. All right. Motion carry.
The next one is the Morgan County Coalition for Literacy Grant. $2,500 to fund literacy nights at our elementary. So I recommend approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Morgan County Coalition for Literacy Grant?
I'll make a motion. We pass Morgan County Literacy Grant.
I'll second that, Matt.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the Morgan County Coalition for Literacy Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carry.
We are now in the donation area. Pass them all as one, but here they are. So we get recognition to these wonderful people and organizations. Donation from Brian and Peggy Moriarity to the Martinsville High School Dance Marathon, $500. Donation from Sheila and Michelle Rilde to MHS Athletics for $500. Donation from Texas Corral to MHS Athletics, $500. Donation from Vicks Bean Custom Homes to MHS Athletics, $500. Donation from Well Now Urgent Care to Marching Artisans Band ECA for $500. Donation from Artisan Scrubbing Bubbles to MHS Athletics for $500. Nice generous donations. I recommend approval of them.
Do we have a motion to approve all the donations?
I'll make a motion. We accept and approve all donations.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the following donations that Eric just read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. Motion carry. Okay, next on the agenda, we have guidelines for public comment. At the completion of regular school board business, a visitor that wishes to speak may do so at the discretion of the president. The visitor will be required to state his or her full name and be given the opportunity to speak, not to exceed three minutes per person. In an effort to fairly adhere to the three-minute guidelines for all speakers, we will present a timer on the interactive panels. Board member will list, board members will listen to the speaker but will not engage in back-and-forth conversations. Board feedback or answers to questions will be provided before the next board meeting or at the beginning of the next board meeting. At the conclusion of three minutes, speakers will be asked to return to their seats. It shall not be permissible to orally present, discuss complaint against individual employees of the MSD of Martinsville at any school board of trustees meeting. Such charges or complaints shall be presented to the board of trustees in writing and shall be signed by the person making the charge or complaint. Boisterous conduct shall not be permitted at any meeting of the board of trustees or any defamatory or abusive remarks be tolerated. We appreciate everyone's ability in maintaining a business order as it has been the practice at school board meetings. And let me reiterate, please do not mention in a comment of a personnel member of the MSD of Martinsville.
Well, I know it's late. I'll try to keep my comments to three minutes. Yes, my name is Daniel Pond. I am an educator. The owner of an orchard wanted to cut down a tree that had never produced fruit. But the manager interceded and said, let me fertilize it one more year. If it doesn't produce, then cut it. Luke 13:6. As an American educator, I am expected to help students learn. Jesus said in Matthew 12:33, "Make the tree good and its fruit will be good." Or, "Make the tree bad and its fruit will be bad." For a tree is recognized by its fruit. Our goal as true educators should be for our students to make the tree good. Good meaning of a favorable character, free from disease, infirmity, or sorrow, can be relied upon, deserving of respect, well behaved, something conforming to the moral order of the universe. One of our founding fathers of American education, Noah Webster, 1840, said, "Every civil government is based upon some religion or philosophy. Education in a nation will propagate the religion of that nation. In America, the foundational religion was Christianity, and it was sown in the hearts of Americans through the home, private, uh, schools and public schools for centuries. Our liberty, growth, and prosperity was the result of a biblical philosophy of life. Our continued freedom and success is dependent on our educating the youth of America in the principles of Christianity. Yes, there will always be a choice to adhere to or disregard these facts and truths. Taught correctly, the Bible is at least a guide for comparing and contrasting and ultimately deciding the direction of every life. Every life is precious and deserves a chance to choose based on good information. If truth, facts, ideas, et cetera, are concealed for the sake of power and control, it's not true education and will never satisfy Bloom's taxonomy of education nor the will of God. Our own John Wooden said, "Be true to yourself. Help others. Make each day your masterpiece. Make friendships a fine art. Drink deeply from good books, especially the Bible. Build a shelter against a rainy day. Give thanks for your blessings and pray for guidance every day." Rest assured, you who sit on the Board of Education of the Martinsville School District, we know you by your fruit. We know how you vote. You have to choose if you want to be a good tree or a bad tree. We love you. Thank you."
Mr. Pond, if you don't mind me asking, I know you've spoken in the last few board meetings and you've mentioned that you're an educator.
Yes.
Are you a current licensed educator? And if so, where do you teach at?
I'm not licensed in K-12. I've, I've taught education in collegiate level, you know, Ivy Tech. I guess you weren't here the first, my first installation six months ago. Ivy Tech and then the Art Institute of Indianapolis before they closed up. And then I also taught three years with our local, the local co-op. Students that came to my studio to learn art and design.
But you're not currently an educator?
Not in, no.
Right at the moment. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
I sat here for, for a year, but when I first moved here, but yeah, since then, I've, there was no doors for me here. So what can I say? So I went to the collegiate level and they had something for me to do. So I got after it. So, is that good?
That's good. No, thank you very much.
Oh, no problem. You have a good night.
Hello, I'm Heather McFarland. As she said, let me start by saying, first of all, on behalf of the Perrigan Homecoming, yes, thank you for transferring the bell back to us. We appreciate it. I actually just come tonight to follow up. I come to the October board meeting and totally knew it was our 100th festival this year. And I'm trying to get the Marching Artisans to make an appearance again this year. So I was just following up on that, hoping to refresh your memories, hoping that maybe it'll happen this year. So thank you very much for your time and have a great night.
Can I ask you a quick question? Have you had any discussion with Mr. Belt?
I have not this year yet.
Okay.
I have every other year. And he says, you know, if it took a holiday weekend, which I do understand that, but like I told him the other time, can you just please send what? What have? I mean, there's children from Perrigan that are on the band. And I'm a bus driver. I even volunteered. I'll go pick them up even. You know, Dennis, just loan me the bus.
Well, I would have, have another conversation with him and also Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
Bell, B-E-L-L, and B-E-L-T for Bell, okay? Sometimes I don't enunciate literally.
I would like to apologize. I could have situated myself in a different piece of this meeting. So I apologize for that. I've, I've heard a few things to relieve one of sorrow. And I've heard to be true to yourself. I am a proud. I am a proud Martinsville resident, lived here since 2002. My husband has lived here, I think, for 42 years. Can't remember, I'm not doing that math that quickly. Happy to pay my taxes every year. I do work in our district, but I'm also a public member allowed to speak on matters of public interest. And I do believe that quality mental health instruction is indeed a matter of public My position with the district has afforded me the opportunity of working with hundreds to thousands of children. I have attended the funerals of children who have killed themselves. My husband has spoken at one of those funerals, at the request of that child's mother. A very bright light in one of my classes. Felt compelled to make a choice that I wish that person hadn't. I noticed that our boys seemed to struggle. Perhaps I am drawn to that because I have a boy. I wish I were not overcome with emotion, but I am. I ask you to please do everything in your power to put as many mental health services in front of our children as possible. No mother should have to feel that way. I appreciate the research on where funding comes from, I do that too. I look at that as well. And it is my honest opinion that the National Institute of Health is a very reputable organization. We all don't have to agree on ideology or politics, but I hope that we will always agree that our kids need to come first and that we want to see their faces every day until they are naturally supposed to meet. Thank you.
All right, next we have Superintendent Carter, Mr. Boland.
Are you sure? We have a number of items I would like to go through. No school on Monday, President's Day, just make sure parents don't kick your kids out to the curb to get on the bus, they're gonna be with you that day. Zombie prom is gonna be Friday, tomorrow night, Saturday night, and then Monday night at seven, and then matinee at three on Sunday. I've not seen that one yet, I'm looking forward to seeing this performance. And if you get an opportunity to go, I know it will be a good performance by our students and staff and crew. They always do a fantastic job, so it'll be enlightening for me. District's robotics showcase, I think you might have mentioned that, Mrs. Lips, February 29th, from six to seven at the fieldhouse at the high school. Hall of Fame ceremony is gonna be Saturday evening. That's, we've got some great inductees, looking forward to that. That's gonna start at 5:00 PM there in the cafeteria at the high school. Noah Sumner, one of our juniors, is left this afternoon to head down to Evansville for the state wrestling meet. He'll be wrestling tomorrow, representing Martinsville. It was great to be over there to, he came into the principal's office and Mr. Bell did a shout out for him on the PA, and then Noah got on and said that he is proud to represent Martinsville and the Martinsville school community. I thought that was a great thing. Noah's one of these kids, he's in the Junior Rising Stars, he was nominated for that. Great academic and athletic young man, so a great representative for the MSD of Martinsville. Our dance team will be participating on Saturday at Homestead in the Duo and Ensemble Championships. See if they can bring back another state championship like they did last year. What a great talented group they are, great team. DECA received the school-based gold certification, only one of five schools in the state of Indiana to receive that honor. So that is an outstanding job for them, and Mr. Craven, who's worked, or Craigan, who's working with them at the high school on that. We already saw Dr. Jenner's positive video. Hoop Bus came to the MSD of Martinsville and came to John R. Wooden Middle School a few days ago. Hoop Bus is here as part of the All-Star Weekend in Indianapolis. And Hoop Bus is international, a group of international guys. There's some Americans on there too, but France, Italy, Japan, Ukraine, a player from the Ukraine. It was great getting to talk to him and look at the world he's left for a short time. And their whole goal is to spread the love of basketball in community. That was their message. Interestingly, they read John Wooden's Seven Point Creed to the students at John R. Wooden Middle School. We talked about the two sets of threes and the seven-point creed and the pyramid of success there. It's in, it's enmeshed in what they do, and there's nobody better to be an example than Coach Wooden, so we're proud of that. And they came down to Martinsville because of Coach Wooden and Martinsville's heritage and our contribution to the game of basketball. James Naismith said it was created in Massachusetts but took root in Indiana. And he is absolutely right. So it was a pleasure to have Hoop Bus there, and the kids, I think, really enjoyed seeing what they, their performance and seeing their interaction with our girls' basketball team, our boys' basketball team, both at the middle school and high school levels. It was a lot of fun and their message was spot on. It was a great, great day for that. The last thing I want to do is give a shout out and offer our support for Mallory Schwab, who is one of our officers. She's one of our county officers. And Mallory was the officer, Morgan County Sheriff's Deputy, that was wounded, shot the other day, January 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, up in the northern part of the county. And unfortunately, it was during a suicide of a 15-year-old young man. And Mallory was wounded, and she's recovering. In a text last night, she said, sore, but she's making it. But, you know, I wanna thank the board, what you have done on security, highlighting and making it a priority when I first came on board, that's what the board told me in the first meeting, and that's carried on with our projects and with our creating the police department. Ironically, one of the reasons we created the police department for the MSD of Martinsville was because we didn't know if there was a serious situation occurring in the county, what would happen with our contract officers from the city who work in our schools. They get called out to SWAT, and that happened the other day. They got called out. And we were able, with our three officers that we currently have, to be able to have an officer at Brooklyn, an officer at Centerton, and then one at the high school internally in the city, because most of the city people went up there. It was obviously all hands on deck in response. So I commend the board for going down that path. Thank you for that, because you put the safety of our students first. So that's kudos to you. And our thoughts and prayers are definitely with Mallory on her recovery, and we hope to see her back real, real soon. That's the last thing I have, so thank you.
Next, do we have any board member comments?
I'd just like to say thank you to the administration, building principals for opening up the Well Wednesdays, allowing us to observe that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
You know, I did forget to mention one thing, I apologize, Mr. President. Our video, our camera system that we put in was able to show the deer who tried to get enrolled in school the other day at Bell, the other evening, jumped through a window and busted out the window, went into the classroom and came back out, didn't find what they needed, I guess. And, but we got it on video. So our video system really, really works well. We were able to get pictures and capture video of the deer trying to enroll in school. Bambi coming to enroll.
Matt, I'd like to say congratulations again to our spelling bee winners. They're all special, and, you know, I congratulate them all, but there is one that was very special to me, as you can see, my grandson won at Postons, I'm pretty proud of that. Also wanna say that I'm very disappointed in our Attorney General, Todd Rakita, very disappointed in him, and I wanna give a shout out to all of our staff members. Yes, I am married to one some days, and, and, you know, I applaud all that you guys do, cause you get hit from, you know, all directions. You get hit, you know, negativity from all different directions, and he certainly didn't help, and I'm very disappointed in him. And I wanna say thank you for everything that you do for our students, that you come in to work every single day and it's your passion, if it wasn't, you wouldn't be doing this. So I wanna say thank you for all that you do. And Shannon, coming from a parent who has buried a child, I've always sat up here and do what's right for these kids, always. You can count on that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, um, thank you to the administration for reviving the MHS Hall of Fame. That's Saturday night, I'm looking forward to celebrating with those inductees. And I have a comment from a new substitute teacher that I heard last week, which was kind of, she hit it spot on after her first day. And she was in a second grade class with 25 kids, and she said, these teachers don't get enough credit. This is hard, worthwhile, but very hard. So, I know it's easy for people to share grievances, that's easy. You know, I think our society has made it easy to become addicted to grievance. But we do the hard things every day. Staff does the hard things every day. They do the hard thing by showing up for their students, figuring out what clicks for each student, and, you know, helping students reach their potential, preparing students to chase their dreams when they graduate. The administration has a hard job of addressing issues when they come up. And I think that it's time that we do the hard things and we choose to be supportive and we show grace. And words of Superintendent Boland, I think it's time to just be kind, courteous, and respectful.
Any other comments? Okay, one other thing I wanted to comment on, if you guys get a chance, WTHR is doing a, she did a special, Samantha Johnson, featured Martinsville, it was great, dealing with John Wooden. I know Eric sent the piece along with Fred Cuttriff.
Fred said it made, he made it look better.
So, but Samantha's a graduate of Martinsville High School, has worked for WTHR, was also involved as cheerleader, DECA, super individual piece on Martinsville, giving us good light and also on John Wooden. Excellent piece, if you get a chance to see that. So that's all I have. Next, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Looking at Luke's smile.